Now call to order, with the staff please call the roll.
Mayor Kaufman.
Sure.
Councilmember Bergen?
Here.
Councilmember Burzens?
Here.
Councilmember Coombs?
Present.
Councilmember Gardner? Councilmember Gardner? Councilmember Gruber?
Here.
Councilmember Hiltz?
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Lawson?
Here.
Councilmember Marcano?
Present.
Councilmember Murillo?
Present.
Roll set, Mayor.
Thank you. Executive session update. We discussed an executive session, labor negotiations and ARDA negotiations. There's no mayor's update. Are there any issue updates? Seeing none, question before us is the adoption of the consent calendar is in any opposition to adopting the consent calendar? Seeing none, the consent calendar is adopted. Items from the policy committees. With the staff please, clerk, please read item number three A.
Item three A, the Civic Engagement Commission for Public Relations, Communications, Tourism, Libraries, Boards and Commissions and Citizen Group Policy Committee.
That's Susan Barkman. Who's presenting?
Councilmember Lawson, I wasn't sure if you wanted to start off. This is the Civic Engagement Commission.
This is not my item. It's Councilmember Keen's item.
Sorry. Councilmember Coombs?
Sure, I wasn't sure if we were going to have Barb speak first. But yeah, so this is something that I worked on with Councilmember Lawson, Barb Doll, and some members of our community. And the intent is broadly to ensure that people have access to our city processes and that we have a group of community members that can help advise council and staff on how to improve our engagement with the community as well as to help plan and put on the Civic Engagement Commission that Councilmember Lawson has been putting on for the last several years. So if anyone has any questions, I'd certainly be happy to answer them.
Questions on item number three A? Seeing none, is there any objection? Oh, Councilmember Lawson.
Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Lawson.
I also just want to say that this is a good thing to have in place because, you know, I put a lot of work into the Civic Engagement Academy and this would actually make sure that this is in place for a long period of time, which I think is very, very important even after we're gone from council. So I think it's really important to have something like this so we can continue the process and make sure that we have civic engagement process in the city.
Mayor, you're muted.
Further questions or comments?
Yes. Bergen?
Councilmember Bergen.
So I was reading in the backup, there, I think it's fifteen appointees to this new commission. I guess my question is, because since you, I mean, I think the Civic Academy is really good, that's kind of just gives everybody a process of what city council does, form of government and that type of thing. I'm not, this almost sounds like a, like a group that would be not connected with the city, that that would be like a political group that might do this on their own. So I, I guess I don't really understand some of the concept.
Yeah, so I'll clarify, no, this is not something that would be separate from the city in any way. The idea is to connect with community members that represent a broad kind of cross-section of the city so that they can help us to understand how we can better connect with members of their community. So that's the idea of having such a large number of people. You'll see also that the intent is to have it representative of the different wards.
Right.
But right, that we are really getting the best cross-section that we can. And then those people work with staff and with council not to advance a political agenda, but to help us know how to get the city's message out and council's message out and information about what council is doing to a wider audience. Because there are often people that really don't know exactly what's going on in the city.
Okay, so I guess my perspective is that is our job as council members to have, you know, hold town halls, to engage with our constituents and have the one-on-ones or the town hall meetings where we do educate and we do allow for citizens to, to give input, to ask questions, to understand the process. I mean, I do that a lot with most of my town halls. So I, I guess I, I don't see the need for it because I see that that is part of our job, each of us, all ten members, to have that engagement.
Absolutely, and it is 100% our job. This is about broadening the reach of that, right? So that it's not just us ten as council members doing it, but there are, there's a group of citizens that's volunteering and dedicating their time to help expand the reach of the efforts that we have. So for example, reaching out to people who may not know when the ward council meetings are or how to find them. Because I don't know about you, but I cannot knock on the doors of all 50,000 of my constituents in a given month to let them know that I'm going to have a town hall meeting. But if there's someone who has a connection to their faith community or to their, you know, workplace or other entities, they can help us make sure that that information gets out and also tell us what's working and what's not working for the people that they are connected to.
Okay, I mean, I actually feel like I do that myself by advertising my town hall through social media and postcards and on the website. And then I have constituents that, that will spread that word for me, you know, you know, to advertise basically the town hall. So I, I, I just, I'm hesitant to add another commission or committee. We have so many and it's really hard, it's just getting, I think overwhelming for staff to have to, you know, to have to staff these committees. But I guess I'm anxious to learn more about it.
Mayor, if you're moving us forward, you may be muted. I can't see.
Okay, is there further questions or comments?
Mayor Dave Gruber.
Councilmember Gruber.
I had a problem with this when we talked about it at our committee. The definition and what it was supposed to achieve, how it was supposed to achieve, how it was supposed to achieve its goals, what those goals were, how those goals fit in with the other committees and commissions that we have across the city. I would like to see, before we go further, I would like to see some sort of Venn diagram, some sort of diagram that says, here's the, you know, Public Safety Commission, here's all these different committees, here's what they do, here's where this committee fits, and then within this committee, these are their roles and responsibilities. Now, this discussion that we just had makes it sound almost like a communications, to augment the communications department, and that's different than the discussion that we had. So I think, I think the definition is undefined. I'm also a little bit concerned about creating another committee, creating the staff organization that would support that committee while we're in a pandemic and while we're $25 million underfunded this year and $30 million underfunded next year. So both those reasons, for both those reasons, I would like this further studied and I would like a better explanation as to how this fits into all of the committees that we already have set up within the city.
Mayor, so, you know, I think we had this discussion in the committee as well, so I'm happy to repeat it. I think that at this time, when we are not engaging with our constituents in the same ways we normally would due to COVID, and we are facing limitations and needing to find new ways to be more effective, that having that opportunity for greater feedback for the community and greater reach is particularly beneficial in this situation. In addition, I think we already have staff working on the Civic Engagement Academy. And so being able to have those staff have community members that are working with them to advance that goal as well and to take on that work and make sure that that's the most effective program that it can do are all reasons that I think that it is certainly beneficial to have at this time.
Further questions or comments? Is there objection to moving?
Mayor, you missed Councilmember Burzens.
Councilmember Burzens.
Thank you.
More three.
Got that. Is there an echo? I hear, I hear an echo. Anyway, I'll, I'll continue. I, I really appreciate Councilmember Lawson's commitment and feel like she was expecting, we were all expecting those folks to go out into the committee and help. To have, have another committee pretty much doing the same thing, to me is not, not a, not necessary, but I think we could better ask time. Councilmember Coombs, did I hear you say that staff is already working in this committee?
No, on the Civic Engagement Academy, there's already staff working on that. And the commu, most of the community members that came, that were a part of this have been involved in that Civic Engagement Academy before. And so they are doing what you're saying they're doing. They're serving on other boards and commissions and also supporting the creation of this. So.
And you were on it, so look what happened to you.
Right.
But my, my question is, I need more information because there are no bylaws set for this yet. All it said was be a resident of the city. Does that mean they have to be a voter, they have to be a citizen? I mean, what, what do they need to be to be on this committee? And last thing I want is to turn up like the task force to be handpicked to be on the committee. You know, I want them to be able to fill out an application, be interviewed, you know, when you start a new committee, you need to set down some rules, and I don't see a lot of rules on this. So, you know, I'm not saying I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote for it, but I just need more information before I make a comment.
So as far as the selection process, the discussion that we had is that they would undergo the same appointment process as any other board and commission. So yeah, maybe for the initial one, there would be interviews. Typically, most of our boards and commissions don't have staff or interviews, they just have recommendations from staff and from other members of the existing commission.
Now, that's true. They fill out applications, they are.
Yes, but the, by the commission, but not by council. So there's only a few that get interviewed by council. So yes, that same application process would be in place, was the discussion that we did have. I honestly wasn't expecting this to come today until we got the packet. So I know I did have a conversation with staff about the creation of the bylaws and whether or not that's something that could be fairly minimal and filled in by that initial group, the members of the committee. Because we do want this to be something that's citizen-driven and citizen-led.
Okay, and I have another question. Who's going to be hiding there with the information that they're going out and spreading? How do they get that information?
From staff, so they have a staff, they would have a staff liaison just like all other boards and commissions have.
Yeah, I.
And then there also, there also is in there the option of, but not required, to have a council liaison, so a council member that works with them and brings information back to council from the committee.
So are you saying that they're pretty much going to be like our systems?
No. No, there would be the option of a council liaison, so that's just someone on council who's helping the commission do their work and bringing information back to us. And that's not required, that just was something that was suggested as a possibility. So for example, when Councilmember Lawson is working on the Civic Engagement Academy, that there's that connection. So no, the role is not for them to be their, our assistants, it's for them to advise us on how, from the perspective of community members, we can continue to improve civic engagement in the city.
Would, would you be willing to let us send you some questions and get some of these questions answered before we vote on it?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, if I had to vote on it today, I would have to vote no because I have too many unanswered questions.
I mean, I'd rather move it forward today and then we can talk about that before we vote on it on the floor, like get those questions answered before it goes to the floor if people are amenable to that.
Mayor, you're muted again.
I just want to say, I, I think the academy was a great idea by Councilmember Lawson. I think this is wholly unnecessary and it is really things that members are already supposed to be doing. And it just, it, it just, it absolutely, I don't think it defies definition. And so are there, is there any objection to moving item number?
Mayor?
Yeah. Councilmember Marcano, three, okay.
Yeah, I did have some comments. So I think to address the staffing concerns and interim clerk Barkman, if this is no longer accurate, please feel free to correct me, but when we met on this, I want to say it was in February or January because we did, we met on this in person. Staff, well, answered a couple of questions that some of us brought up. One was, do we need to actually consolidate some of our existing boards and commissions? Because as I heard, you know, we do have a lot of them. And staff's answer was an emphatic no, they all serve their own purpose and the membership seems to be pretty, you know, pleased, I guess, with what they are responsible with. And the second was, would this be a burden on our staff? And again, the answer was a no. And I believe that's all reflected in the minutes of either our January or February meeting. I apologize, I can't remember exactly which one. So these are things that we had already considered and were answered for us. Secondly, I want to add that the goal of this board, the way I understood it, and I think the way it's written in here, is that it's not just to advise us, but to also inform and educate the community as to how our government works, how they can get more engaged, which includes the promotion of our other boards and commissions. It's not to just literally do our job for us, that is part of what we do, yes, but we also do a lot more. But I think it's really to just reach out into these communities that might not necessarily have this information already. And God knows, our schools do not really have great civics, especially when it comes to local government. So I, I can actually see a really great use for this commission and it's something I'm really excited to see before us.
Okay.
And actually, Mayor, there, that is something else that, that I neglected to mention that was part of our prior discussions, was opportunities for our youth as part of their social studies programs to engage with this commission and to build greater civic education and create some opportunities for students there.
Mayor, I have a question.
Councilmember Bergen.
So I, I really am struggling with creating another, another committee commission. And we, you just mentioned the youth commission. So what, what, I mean, shouldn't this be something they could take on just to help with their own peers in terms of, of, you know, I mean, I don't even know half the time what, what that committee does. I, I really, I just don't want to add another committee this year personally. I appreciate all the effort, you know, put into it and the thought behind it. I really did like the, the academy that Councilmember Lawson put together. I just, I just don't think another committee is necessary right now.
Further discussion?
Mayor?
Mayor Portem Johnson?
Yes, kind of building off, I think Councilmember Marcano, I mentioned this. I don't want the reason not to support this because we have issues with our, with our current number of committees or how that works. Perhaps this, this commission, I know that some of us have been talking about this, I would love to even have recommendations. As a commission member of these upper twenty-some commissions, we expect the following. And one would be great to have community-led, you know, ordinances and other opportunities. And that could be something that perhaps this commission could suggest. So I just want to make sure we're not, we're not necessarily killing this idea because we don't like the number of commissions or how those operate. I see, I, I'm glad to hear that Councilmember Lawson is in support of this. The, the difference, I see there may be some overlap, but that Councilmember Lawson's initiative is really like how to get involved, how to get engaged with individuals, showing them the inner workings that a lot of people don't know, and, and that, and those, those groups being part of that process and then perhaps running for office someday or just being a neighborhood advocate. This is taking maybe some folks who know how to reach the community and different ideas and shaping how we involve, involve local government and getting and promoting it. So I see there's some different, different avenues, but I just, I hope because we have some problems maybe or concerns with the other commissions, we can still address that without turning down this opportunity.
This is really, Mike Hoffman, this is really a delegation of our responsibilities to unelected individuals. And if anybody feels that they really need this, you know, I don't know. Well, I won't go there, but that, but I, I think the, the mere fact that, this is incredible. I mean, this is your job as council members. If you're not able to do your job, I think you ought to, that, that is a separate, that's a separate argument, but this is really delegating your responsibilities as an elected official. Councilmember Bergen?
Just to add on to the comment about community-led ordinances, again, that is our job. I, I, that's, I just, that is our job.
Mayor Dave Gruber?
Councilmember Gruber?
I just want to point out that, that when we had our committee meeting and the staff said, you know, that, that there's not going to be a problem with funding, I think the discussion was more along the lines that if you tell, if council tells us to do this, we're going to do it. That's a very, very strong leap to go from that statement to councils or, you know, the staff is good with this, they're good with having more nightly meetings, they're good with having people available for the nightly meetings. I, I think that, that, that wasn't exactly what was covered. Furthermore, the, the tone of this, if, if we're going to have another committee, committee that, that's in charge of our community academy, I'm good with that. But this discussion, we have gone from a, we're going to create a committee that does our communications, we're going to create a committee that does our ordinances, we're going to create a committee that does our communications, and we're going to create a committee that, that is responsible for the citizens' academy. This has been, this changed five times in the last 10 minutes. So for this to go to the floor, the way it is, right, there's nothing to go to the floor. This is so incredibly soft, it, it's, it's, it's made multiple changes. I think this certainly has to, go back to the committee, it has to be further tightened down, it has to have, you know, who the members are going to be, what their jobs are going to be, what they hope to accomplish. If the goal is going to be to focus on the community academy, so be it. If the goal is going to be to focus as an arm of a communications department of the city, so be it. If it's, but, but we've added, just in this conversation, five other taskings that were never discussed before at committee, and I, this is not ready to go to, go to the floor.
Mayor?
Mayor Portem Johnson?
Yes, I just want to clarify, and, and I hope I didn't, and I apologize, Councilmember Coombs, if I added to some confusion. I was just giving some examples on the need and the needs that we can address with our current structure if we have problems with that. But the backup is very simple and laid out, and I think Councilmember Coombs articulated that. In addition, like was said, there's been a lot that's happened since it was a committee. And in terms of just challenges, I, I take issue that we're not necessarily doing our job if we're supporting this committee. I mean, we each have 60,000-plus constituents, and if there is an opportunity to have, have some folks from every ward, part of this to make sure that our outreach is better, working with, you know, people of different backgrounds, languages, mobility, I think that's great. But I just want to circle back that the background that was in this is very clean and clear, just because we might have added a few comments about it, I just hope I, I didn't mean to make any confusion with that. I just wanted to clarify, the discussion was going toward the problem with all of these committees. But the, the issue we're voting on tonight, I think, is, is laid out in, in the backup very well.
Mayor, I'd just like to clarify that there was active and enthusiastic participation from staff. It wasn't just, I guess we'll do this if you say so. And so I've had conversations with multiple staff members that are in support of this, want to be involved in it, and have ideas of ways that it can operate in our community. And so this isn't just putting a burden on staff that they're not interested in.
Further questions or comments?
Burzens?
Councilmember Burzens.
Thank you. I think just the opposite because it is so short. You know, it says, working with immigrants. We have an immigrant community. We have a youth commission, we have a senior commission, we have a veterans' commission, we do have community groups. So I think we want to get more information out to them, work with these commissions that we already have. We have a big city and a lot of, of committees and commissions, and they would love to, to work with us. I have a veteran who calls me monthly to see what I have to say. But you know what, I could pick up the phone, I'll hit too. So I, I go back to, I don't think it's needed, and no one answered my question. Do these have to be citizens, voters, or who is going to be on this? Because the one is not here.
So I think it's fairly clear, they need to be able to establish that they're residents of the city.
Okay, so they're not, they're not.
They're not required to be voters or citizens.
Okay, so they don't have to be citizens? Okay.
Further questions or comments? Is there objection for moving item number three A forward?
I object.
I'm sorry, let's see, okay. Okay, myself. Is there further objection besides, let's see, Councilmember Burzens, Councilmember Gruber, the mayor, who else? Is there further objection?
Bergen?
Councilmember Bergen. Oh, very, very well. Item number three A will move forward. Item number three A. IGA for maintenance of C dot traffic signals.
Mayor?
Councilmember Burzens?
Thank you. I've been told that my connection is not good, so I'm going to sign out and try to get back in.
Okay.
Okay.
Item number three, three B, staff?
This is the IGA for the maintenance for C dot traffic signals. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I hope everyone can hear me all right. My name is Lynn Center. I'm the Deputy Director of Public Works in Charge of Operations. I have a very short verbal presentation for you this evening. We are bringing forward an IGA with Colorado Department of Transportation to C dot to perform maintenance on the C dot traffic signals along. to perform maintenance on the CDOT traffic signals, um, along state highways within the city jurisdiction. CDOT will ultimately maintain jurisdiction over these signals, but contracts with the city for maintenance. Our first agreement like this was done, was executed back in 1974, so we've been doing this for them for 46 years. The agreement covers traffic signals and associated pavement markings within the signal footprint, like crosswalks and stop bars. It includes a total of 76 signals along all the state highways within the city of Aurora, including 29 intersections on State Highway 30, which is Sixth Avenue, from Stephen D. Hogan Parkway to Avan- Havana Street, and Havana Street from Sixth Avenue to Yale Avenue, 23 intersections on State Highway 40, which is Colfax Avenue from Airport Boulevard to Chester Street, three intersections with I-70, and those would be the ramps at Airport Boulevard and Tower Road, 14 intersections on State Highway 83, which is Parker Road from Chambers Road to Isle of Avenue, and finally, seven intersections with I-225, and those would be the ramps at Isle of Avenue, Mississippi Avenue, Alameda Avenue, and 17th Place. CDOT will be paying the city of Aurora $300 per signal per month, which is a total of $273,600 per year, or $1,368,000 for the five-year term of the agreement. The maintenance would include timing, changing bulbs, inspections, and everything else needed to maintain these signals. We had prior agreements that were executed with an option to extend annually for five years, and that extension would require only a letter between, um, city and CDOT. The term agreement, it will be effective as soon as it's signed by the state controller or July 1st, 2021, whichever occurs first, and the term of this agreement is five years, so it expires in June of 2026. Due to the tight timeline and delays we had in negotiation due to COVID, we requested approval to schedule, um, the IGA concurrently for steady session and regular session tonight, so we will hope to be seeing it on our regular session this evening as well. And just to let you know that in the future, we'll be bringing a similar IGA forward for roadway maintenance. So our question tonight was, does council approve this item for consideration and forward for approval at regular city council, regular meeting of city council on September 14th, which is tonight?
Is there objection, uh, to moving item number 3B forward? Uh, first of all, I'm sorry, are there, are there any questions or comments on item number 3B?
Mayor.
Um, sorry, Councilmember Lawson?
Uh, Councilmember Orio.
Councilmember Orio.
I, I just wanted to ask a quick question, um, what is the benefit of, um, us providing these services as opposed to CDOT? Is there cost benefit? Is it just ease of us maintaining, you know, the immediate infrastructure? Can you just comment on that?
Um, sure, it's actually mutually beneficial in that we are absolutely helping CDOT out with, um, maintaining their infrastructure, but it also allows us to be a little bit more responsive when things happen to the traffic signals, and we can, um, uh, respond a little bit quicker, and so take care of the traveling public a little bit better. The rate that was quoted for this agreement actually, um, very adequately covers our costs for maintaining these signals.
Perfect, thank you.
Uh, further questions or comments on item number, uh, 3B? I see none, is there objection to moving item number 3B forward? I see none, item number 3B will move forward. Uh, with clerk, please read the title of item number 3C.
This is the no-knock ordinance resolution.
Uh, presentation.
Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Lawson.
I'm, I'm just going to just, uh, start just by why I'm bringing this forward, um, for council to consider. Um, as everyone knows, a no-knock warrant is an order from a judge that allows police to enter a home, um, without announcing. Due to the circumstances that have happened, one of the reasons I'm bringing this forward is due to the Breonna Taylor case that happened, um, that where she was, a, a no-knock was done, and she was shot. I wanted to also bring this forward too, because I think that it is a dangerous situation in certain circumstances. I know that the initial, um, idea behind this is to get certain people, certain, uh, violent offenders off of the street, or, and to do this, sometimes it was due to the war on drugs as well. That whole thing has changed in our, in our state. But I think that there's a danger, not only to police officers, but also to people who could potentially be in the house, and that is, you might be thinking that it could be the violent offender, but it could also be other people in the house, kids, people that, um, could potentially get killed, and on the other side, an officer can get killed. So this would actually prohibit, prohibit the ban of no-knocks only, other warrants would still be, um, you know, be, still be able to go forward as needed. But again, I think that we have to look at what's going on in our country today. Right now, we are looking at reforms, I think that this particular, um, when we're reimagining and looking at police, I think this is something that we need to consider. I mean, there could be other options, a pause, maybe there could be other, more surveillance, but at the end of the day, this particular ordinance would, would basically prohibit that, uh, particular action, and, um, I think that it's something that is needed. I think there are other jurisdictions in the country that are working on this, like Atlanta, San Antonio, even some police departments are putting it in their directive, so I... Further questions for myself and Nancy, please, um, please ask.
Uh, further questions or comments? Well, i- is there, uh, staff presentation?
Not from the city attorney's office, mayor, but I wanted to see if the chief was on the line.
Yes, I'm here.
Great.
I just wanted to give you the op- option to make a presentation if you wanted to at this point, chief.
I think I covered it in public safety committee, but I will, I will reiterate that this is very concerning to me. I think we've seen an increase, not only, um, violence towards officers, as we just saw in the LA sheriffs that were just ambushed and shot, I think this just puts us more at risk. It's something that we use very sparingly, and something that, um, a judge actually has checks and balances in place, and it's not something the police department does on their own. So I feel as though, um, it's very, it's rarely used, but when we do use it, it's because we need to use it, and it's a reason to use it.
Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Lawson.
Um, I would like to, um, to, to, to tell the chief, well, if it's not used readily, and we've had 10 no-knocks, I guess from 2018 to 2020, and, and five were actually no-knocks, and you say that it's not used, then I don't see why there would be opposition not to have it. Police departments are not, are putting it in, uh, their directives, as I stated, I know San Antonio, I know Tulsa, there's different departments, also there's other cities, but if it's not needed, um, why not be proactive? Because it could happen, you could say it's not going to happen, but it could happen, and then we're back as a council to be reactive, to find a solution. So, um, that's what I wanted to say to that, to the chief.
I have a question, mayor. Oh, sorry.
I'd like to hear the chief's response to that.
Sorry.
Yes, ma'am, and I'm, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, I just know in those five occasions, it needed to happen, and that we, I was just saying that we do have checks and balances, if, I know people are concerned that the, the police may be using this, uh, inappropriately, but we do have a judge that is, um, looking at these and making sure that they believe that it is necessary as well, it's not just the police, but I, I hear what you're saying, ma'am, I appreciate it.
Then, chief, um, I wasn't trying to be argumentative with you, I'm sorry if my voice, uh, carries to try to be argumentative, I, I'm a very strong speaker, um, so I wasn't trying to be argumentative to you, I was just trying to counter your point.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, uh, further questions or comments?
Mayor, I have a question.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Okay. Um, Councilmember Bergen, were you, I think you? Did you have a question?
Just proceed, I'll, I'll go to Councilmember Bergen.
Okay, thank you. Um, chief, I just have a question, because I'm still, what's, can you outline, just so, for people who haven't read all the backup? All right, the difference between a knock, a knock warrant, does the person have to answer, or you're just announcing yourself, compared to a no-knock? I mean, I think it's just, if you could outline those two differences, please.
Sure, ma'am, so a knock and announce is just that, we knock, we say police, and then they go, so it just gives the person on the other side of, of the, um, in the house, uh, notice that we're there, which gives them obviously, um, time if they are having difficulty getting the door knocked in, or what have you, um, it gives them time to arm themselves and to respond, versus it being more of a surprise situation, and I just, um, I think, uh, you know, the Breonna Taylor tragedy is, is horrible, but that was not a no-knock warrant situation. So there's, there's a lot out there, and I know everyone has really great intentions on what we're trying to do, I'm just really concerned about taking this tool away for the safety of my officers.
Could I, could I do a follow-up, please, to that?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim.
Okay, so I just want to, timing obviously is everything, but, but literally with a announcement, you knock, police, and then you can come in, right? I mean, does it have to be anything beyond that? I'm just thinking of, yes, I know the person can maybe grab something in, in that second, but also maybe say, I'm this person, I mean, do you have to announce who you're calling for, or you just say, um, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to, to understand the, the concern, because it seems like you can still enter really quickly, you're just saying that you're the police. Am I missing a time requirement or other notification?
So, um, so the issue was, and I, I want to correct myself, it was, we did have, they did have a no-knock authorization in the Breonna Taylor case, but they choose to, to knock first on that one, so I apologize for that. However, um, obviously, there are different scenarios that they use with a no-knock, they may, and they may go ahead and use a flashbang or something of that nature to distract the folks that are inside, to give us more time, and so I'm, you know, we can have a further discussion on that, I'm not sure if my deputy chief, Darren Parker, is available to speak on this call, if he is just, uh, listening in, or if he's able to participate, but, um, there are different tactics that we use with a no-knock, that, that it's not just knock and, and, um, you know, go right in. Obviously, you know, a flashbang and those types of things can, and we try, and we do do a ton of surveillance on these, it's something that we want to make sure we know who is in the house, those types of things, where they're located within the house, and a lot of times, we, we use different tactics to get that information that I, I can't really share on this, on this call.
Further questions or comments?
Yes.
Sorry, uh, Councilmember Bergen.
Bergen's still here. Hello, you forget me a lot of times. Um, thank you. So I was going to bring up that Breonna was, was not a no-knock warrant, it was a, a terrible tragic situation, but, um, but the chief did address that. So just to be clear, um, they always have to have a warrant, whether it's a no-knock and announce, I mean, a knock and announce, or it's a no-knock, they always have to have a warrant from a judge, correct, chief?
Yes, ma'am, the, uh, the warrants are signed through district attorneys, and a no-knock is approved by, uh, by the judge.
Okay, I think you said that these are, the no-knock is only used in very rare circumstances of very violent criminals, and I guess I'm kind of, I mean, I understand the concern of abusing that, but I also hope that our police chief, I guess you're probably the only one on this call that's ever experienced one of these kind of, uh, situations, like we certainly, as council members, don't, have never experienced this, but if they are for very dangerous criminals that are going to possibly do harm to the public, I mean, the job of public safety is to protect the public from harm, and as you said, it's only used in very rare circumstances. What are we supposed to do? Knock on the door and say, hey, criminal, you know, drug cartel person, um, can I please come in? Oh, let me get my machine gun first, and then you can come in to, you, you know, I, I just think it's a very dangerous, um, situation for our officers, and, uh, i- i- if they didn't have a warrant or something, I could see the, the concern, it seems like that you, you use good, uh, discretion, and you train your officers to use good discretion in this case.
Uh, chief, uh, Mike Hoffman, what does a judge look for, uh, in terms of granting a no-knock, uh, warrant?
Um, I, obviously, each judge is going to have their, have what they're looking for, but I think generally, they're going to look for the level of danger, uh, the possibility of violence, um, that could precipitate, as well as, um, the history of those that are in... Excuse me, sir.
I'm just glad it wasn't me this time.
Sorry about that, sorry. So, um, yeah, so they're going to look at all the totality of the circumstances, make sure that we have, um, you know, all our, all our ducks in a row, and make sure that this is absolutely necessary, and they will, if they don't believe it's as dangerous as we're saying, they will not grant it.
Okay, further questions or, uh, comments?
Can I just make a comment?
Uh, Councilmember Lawson.
So, I'm in my house, and you guys suspect that someone in my house is maybe a drug dealer. You come in my house, I have no weapon, I have no weapons, but maybe I have a, a flashlight, it could look like, and then what's going to happen here? I mean, this is what I'm trying to prevent, because when you come into someone's house, and you, it's unannounced, I don't care how much civilians, sometimes you don't know who's in the house, and someone, and I don't have a gun personally in my house, but I might have something like a stick or something, or something to try to protect myself, it looks like something, I get shot by the police, Lord forbid, or vice versa. Someone does have a gun, if you break in, if you come into someone's house and it's unannounced, the first thing someone's going to do is be like, protection. So I'm just, I just think it's bad on both ends, from the officer's standpoint, and also from whoever else is in the house, no matter if you're trying to get to that guy, sometimes there's people, victims, in the house that maybe not, maybe they don't even know that this person is who they're supposed to be, they could be threatened, there's a lot of different situations that surveillance cannot detect.
Uh, chief.
Mayor.
Uh, would the chief like to respond?
I guess I hear, um, the scenario that Councilmember Lawson is, is laying out, and obviously, we're not going to know every, everything that could happen inside of that home, but the fact that there are people that are heavily armed, or, or very dangerous individuals, that's why we would ask for a no-knock warrant, so, um, you know, I, I know it's not a perfect situation by any means, and we're, and we have just as much, um, concern for, for human life and that, but I just, they've found across, um, you know, different departments, that this is the safest way to do it. I'm not sure if Deputy Chief Parker is able to get on the line, if so, um, if he wants to address that as well. Are you there, sir? Unfortunately, I don't think he's a participant, um, so I'm not, he's not going to be able to, to give his, his take as a, as a tenured SWAT officer.
Well, I guess the research that I have seen is why, and why many jurisdictions are doing this and putting this in place, and also the police departments are putting in their directive, because it is happening a lot around the country. Uh, one reason is because, um, some people, some, uh, council members, councils, um, some police departments, um, depending on which area you're looking in, they look at it, it can be seen as, uh, excessive force. So I kind of look at your statistics a little differently, maybe, um, I'm not, you know, I'm not in with every, the police department, but I have done research on this issue, and, and that's the reason why there is a lot of jurisdictions that are putting this in place.
Mayor.
Um, yeah, let me just say.
Excuse me, sir. I have Chief Parker here on my speakerphone.
Okay, great.
If you have a question for him as well, he's here.
Okay, go ahead, and, uh, Mr. Parker.
Okay, so, um, yeah, a couple of things, first of all, um, to Councilmember Lawson, the issue you were talking about with the flashlight, that's, that's more of an issue of threat identification than it has anything to do with whether the, the person's a no-knock or knock and announce, officers face that same, um, issue, you know, all the time. So I understand what you're talking about, but really, um, is it applicable as far as the discussion of no-knock versus knock and announce? And one thing I was going to say is, um, as far as the process, the, the things that they're looking for, and this has to go through the DA's office first, and they're looking for actual information about weapons, uh, whether the person has a history of weapons, about what officers can articulate, about the likelihood of presence of weapons, and those types of things, and if that information is not there, they're not going to get it through the DA's office first of all, and will never see a judge. So, um, I hope that answers that concern. And then, the other part is, um, the, the reason for the no-knock from a tactical perspective has everything to do with speed and surprise, and so it's actually safer for not only our officers, but it's actually safer for the people inside the residence, um, to not have that, that initial warning, because that creates confusion. because that creates confusion on their part about who is at the door. And you would be surprised about how quickly officers can get to the areas they need to in a residence or building. And we have had, and I can attest to this personally from my own experience having served knock and announce and no-knock warrants, where they had actually been able to get to somebody that had access to a weapon before that person could even make the decision about whether or not to retrieve that weapon. So, in the long run, although we don't like to do these unless they're absolutely necessary, they are, when the factors are there as far as weapon identification, you know, weapons that can be articulated, you know, likely to be present, it's actually safer for everybody involved.
Deputy Chief Parker, is this the most dangerous thing that a police officer has to do? Is to, where you have intelligence that the individual is most likely armed, which then, and you go through the court process and you have to enter? Is that about the most dangerous thing that a police officer has to do?
It is very dangerous, and that's why we want the element of speed and surprise. Because like I said, we can actually get to people before they can make a poor decision about retrieving anything, whether that's a weapon or something else that could potentially be misidentified.
Further questions or comments?
Mayor.
Councilmember Marcano.
Thank you, sir. Chief, I have a question, a couple of questions for you real quick, if you don't mind. So, from what I have read, the vast majority of no-knocks are typically issued to deal with search warrants, and a lot of those involve drugs. Is the same true for the most part here in Aurora?
It's been my experience that drugs and weapons, and drugs alone will not get you a no-knock search warrant. There has to be a component of weapons to it.
Okay. So, one of the interesting things that I also read, and just so, if y'all wanna also follow up on this, it's a really great paper put together by the ACLU, it's called "The War Comes Home." And that unfortunately, in some of these instances, this has actually resulted in shootings and officer deaths due to the folks who are home basically being startled, thinking that they were being robbed by, you know, for a deal of the wrong or something like that. And in one of these cases, the individual who shot the officer was actually found innocent on all charges because he thought he was acting in self-defense. So, I'm really concerned about the other side of this, and I really don't think that we're really addressing, and I think that Councilmember Lawson has tried to. So, I wanna know what those statistics look like here. How many officers have been hurt executing these versus not executing these? And how many civilians have been hurt, and vice versa?
If we have any, um.
Sorry.
Any officers hurt as a result of an execution of a no-knock search warrant? I'd have to do the research on it and certainly get you that information to make it 100% accurate. And I just wanted to add that with regard to, you know, how we, as we make when we decide to execute a search warrant, many times, we will decide, depending on the facts of the case, that, you know, we will just basically do what we call an order out, or we won't even do any kind of an entry to the home. We will make notes, we will contain the location, we'll make contact with people inside and order them out. That's actually safest for everyone involved, and then we'll enter the residence, you know, to clear it before it can be searched. But there's another factor that's involved in a no-knock warrant, and that's the destruction, potential destruction of evidence. And so, if we make a decision tactically to do an order out, we are absolutely giving up the opportunity to make sure that evidence cannot be destroyed. So, that's just another factor that goes into the decision to execute a warrant in a no-knock style.
Mayor, you're muted.
For further questions or comments?
Mayor, this is Councilmember Hiltz.
Councilmember Hiltz.
Thank you. I have a question and a comment. My comment is that, and I'm gonna speak partially on behalf of what I think Councilmember Lawson might agree with, but I don't think the issue here is whether or not the courts are a check and balance. I think the question is about the implementation of that warrant, regardless of how valid that warrant may be. But my question is, if you don't have a no-knock warrant and you knock, how long do you have to wait before you enter? Because it's my understanding that you can knock and then enter pretty quickly afterwards, which is very simple to begin with.
So, the courts don't give you, don't give us an actual time. They leave it up to, I believe the language is a reasonable amount of time. So, you know, that takes in a number of factors. You know, what the location is, what the intel, you know, criminal history of the person, you know, the target, you know, all of those different factors play into it. But I can tell you that absent the concern for destruction of evidence, most officers would prefer to, from a safety standpoint, to either do a surround and order out as opposed to a knock and announce, just because of that. Even, you know, 15 seconds can make a huge difference regarding the safety of the people inside and safety of the officers.
Further questions or comments?
Thank you.
Mayor.
I can't, who, Councilmember Gardner.
Thanks. Yeah, I wanted to, I'm glad Councilmember Marcano brought up that paper because I wanted to expand on that a little bit because I wrote that down coming into tonight. But since 2010, 39 people have been killed executing no-knock warrants in the US, including eight police officers. And the ACLU says over 80% of no-knock warrants are to execute search warrants for drug cases. So, I think that's relevant to point out. But my question is, if a judge issues a no-knock warrant, I asked this in public safety, but the answer was really unclear to me, and so I just wanna make sure I have the answer before we vote on this. If a judge issues a no-knock warrant, can we execute it as a search and announce, or I mean, a knock and announce rather than a no-knock warrant? We, in other words, we don't have to, we don't have to execute it as a no-knock, even if that's how the judge issues it, is that correct?
That is correct. We have, even though we have the authorization from a judge to do as a no-knock, we ultimately have discretion, or we want to, if we want to. There's been decisions made where, because of a variety of reasons, we obtained authorization for a warrant, you know, a search warrant, whether a no-knock, knock and announce, whatever. And because the information, because we weren't able to execute that warrant in a timely fashion, even though the warrant may still have been valid, we have decided not to because the information has grown stale. There's a number of reasons why we would change our tactics, even though we might have authorization to do a no-knock, we might not, we might do it as a knock and announce, we might do it as a surround and order out, or we might not execute it at all.
Further questions or comments?
Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Coombs.
Oh, Councilmember Coombs.
So, I think the other issue that hasn't really been brought up, but I think is very likely connected to the concern that, or the scenario that Councilmember Lawson put out regarding that a person might try to protect themselves is that people, that at times, the wrong house is gone to in the case of a no-knock warrant. I don't think I'll ever forget learning about the case of Ishmael Mena when I was a teenager, who was killed by the Denver police because he went to protect himself because they went to the wrong house. So, he didn't know, like, why was somebody busting into his house? And so, I think that's a scenario that has happened, that does happen, and that could easily result in people choosing to hide and then attack an officer and then be harmed as a result. And so, I don't know if that has ever happened in the city of Aurora, but I know that it is part of the concern types of warrants.
Okay. Further questions or comments?
Yes, Bergen.
Councilmember Bergen.
So, it was said that ultimately, whether a warrant is authorized by a judge, the decision-making is still left up to the commanding officer on the scene to decide whether to use that no-knock or, you know, completely not even intercept at all. So, I guess what I'm thinking is, why are we gonna take away a very rarely-used tool? Why not leave the tool available? I think what we're looking at is how we make, how the police make decisions based on, you know, having that authority from a judge. So, I guess I look at it as it'd be better to leave that tool available to us in the very rare circumstances that we need them, so it's there. But then, let's talk about when is appropriate to use it and what are the circumstances around using it? I think, and that would be a discussion with the chief.
Yes ma'am, so, I, if I could, if I could, Mayor?
Please.
Okay. You're exactly right. All we're asking for is that we do not have a tool taken away from us so that we can utilize it when we feel it is absolutely necessary, when the DA as well as a judge also feels it's absolutely necessary. And I just, I'm afraid to create a law that is going to tie our hands and then to make a situation worse for us and the people inside.
Further questions or comments?
Burzens.
Councilmember Burzens.
Thank you. You know, I listened to the public safety meeting and I'm listening here tonight, and, you know, we can sit and second-guess all this and think of what-ifs, all the what-ifs. You know, we do that in life. But when we're talking about policing, I am not a trained police person. And I don't know anybody on council that is. They, we have some wonderful people with 25, 30 years' experience on police, and I just, I don't want to take away anything that will jeopardize the safety of our police. And we all know that people make mistakes, that, you know, that, it happens. People do make mistakes. They make mistakes, we make mistakes. It's not a perfect world. But for me to sit here and tell the police that I know better how they should handle policing, and to say, you know, "You're a police, but I know better, I'm gonna second-guess all these scenarios," I just can't do it. I look at this list and we had two entries in 2018. One was a murder and one was guns. 19 guns and drugs, 20 guns and drugs, and assault rifle and drugs. If you're going into a house that you know has assault rifles, you know, you can't give them time to grab the rifle. It's for their safety as well as the police's safety. I just see that this is a real problem for me to sit here and tell the police how to police, and me to just second-guess everything and come up with all of these scenarios because we can all do that. You know, there are scenarios for everything we do. So, I just, I want our police to be as safe as possible. And before I get off, I have a question, Chief Wilson. If this does pass, can't you ask the sheriff's department or federal agencies to come help you? If there's a warrant issued and the Aurora police can't have a no-knock, can't you get help for somebody that can? Such a dangerous situation.
Ma'am, I would defer to, I know Nancy Rogers is on the line, but if it's an ordinance within the city of Aurora that's passed, then we will not be able to, in my opinion, would not be able to use that. Nancy, are you there?
Yeah, I am, Chief. I would agree with the chief. The ordinance would require the chief to adopt a policy, and it's well-known under police directives that an officer can't get around policy by just asking somebody else to do it. Also, a judge would, unless Arapahoe County was involved in the investigation and could also issue the affidavit of probable cause for the warrant, it's unlikely that another law enforcement officer would take on that task of the warrant if they didn't have firsthand knowledge of the case.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there further questions or comments? I think we need to move forward.
Mayor Dave Gruber.
Uh, Councilmember Gruber.
Sorry, this is gonna be quick. I know we're gonna lose. I know that this tool's gonna be taken away from the police department, as you can tell by the conversation. But I wanted to point out a couple of things. First off, murder in Aurora is up 81%. We've had 29 murders this year. Violent crime total is up almost 24%. Burglary, motor theft, larceny are all up. And so, major crimes is jumping in Aurora. It very much concerns me that we would take a tool away based on ACLU study when there aren't, we haven't heard anything about any of the police organizations that have done studies on this. So, to the point that none of us are trained police officers, none of us have any experience to make this decision, I'm very concerned about that. Frankly, I would rather, I would like to see pretty much what the state did with regards to lawsuits against the police departments. In other words, if we make this law and a police officer is killed based on this law, the police officer should be able to sue city council, each of us, for up to $25,000. I think that would give a little more weight to the decisions that we're making. It's very easy to make an academic decision that says, "I think this is the right thing to do." It's another thing that when you're dealing with a person's life or that person's family could come back to us, I think that we would give it a much different view.
Okay. Let me just conclude by saying, the Marine Corps I did, every, as an infantry officer, went through military operations in built-up area and house-clearing operations are the most dangerous thing that ground troops can do. And I, I'm just amazed that we have people, men and women, that are willing to step forward and do this incredibly dangerous work. And I believe that taking away this tool will not only make it more dangerous for our police officers, but actually will make it more dangerous for the occupants inside by giving them a warning, however short. With that said, is there opposition to moving item number 3C forward?
May I object?
Bergen, object.
And myself. Any further opposition?
I believe Burzens.
I have down, okay. Item number 3C will move forward. With clerk, please read the title of item number 3D.
This is an IGA with C dot for the 13th Avenue, multiple quarter study.
Staff presentation.
Tom, on. Stephen.
Yes, thank you. Am I going to have an option to share my presentation?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Tom Rucker Bradock, Senior Transportation Planner here at the city. As city staff, we often seek various opportunities for important transportation improvement projects and studies for the city. In 2019, we submitted an application for Denver Regional Council of Government's Transportation Improvement Program Grant to study 13th Avenue. We were awarded that grant, and now we have to enter a intergovernmental agreement with the Colorado Department of Transportation to receive that grant funding. Today, I'll go over why we submitted a grant for 13th Avenue and the specifics of this project, as well as asking the council to advance this IGA to regular session for consideration and approval. And I will go ahead and share my screen. Here's a bit more background. The city participated in a Complete Streets Consortium along with the cities of Westminster and Arvada in the summer of 2018. As part of that, each city was asked to submit a quarter for the case study for the group to examine, and Aurora submitted 13th Avenue. Using material from this exercise, we compiled a TIP grant application and were awarded $295,000 in federal funds with a $205,000 local match. The local match has been identified within Public Works budget and will be transferred to planning. These pictures are from the Complete Streets Consortium Aurora case study where the national experts and staff from the partner cities looked at 13th Avenue. The street connects directly to both the 13th Avenue Light Rail Station and the Denver Bicycle Network, but it lacks dedicated bike facilities and has narrow sidewalks. The material for this exercise directly led us to successfully apply for the TIP grant. This project fits into the city's emphasis on complete streets. As you may remember from past presentations at council, complete streets is the idea that every street should be able to safely and comfortably be used by all users, including those be able to safely and comfortably be used by all users, including those who walk, bike, take the bus, drive a car, or drive a delivery vehicle. In many ways, the city of Aurora has been practicing complete streets for several years. This is a map of the TIP grants we received since 2014. These projects all improve the experience for people walking or biking in Aurora. Here's the study area. It generally goes from 12th and Yosemite on the west to the High Line Canal Past Chambers on the east. This alignment would connect to the, the High Line Canal Trail, Tollgate Creek Trail, and the Denver Bicycle Network. There are 11 schools within a quarter mile of 13th Avenue. The study area parallels Colfax Avenue, and this could be a primary route for people that need to get to destinations on Colfax Avenue, but may not want to walk or bike on Colfax Avenue. Transit is also an important factor in the study. The corridor connects to the 13th Avenue Light Rail Station, but also crosses important bus routes such as Route 105 Havana and Route 153 Chambers. Purpose is to conduct a corridor-wide multimodal mobility study. We'll look at how well the transportation system handles demand both today and tomorrow, and identify a well-connected, safe, and comfortable multimodal transportation network in this area. Looking at those north-south connections to Colfax and the Anschutz Medical Campus, as well as improving crossings at major arteries, will be a primary focus of the study. Here's the project schedule. Because of the terms of funding, we're required to have a kickoff meeting with CDOT no later than the end of this month, and the study will be completed approximately 15 months after kickoff. The outcome of the study will be a detailed report on the project process, public engagement, phasing, conceptual design, cost estimates, and funding strategies. What we've learned is that in order to get funding for construction, it's important to have a good report from a study that identifies the need for that improvement and lists specific elements and costs of each part of the project. Having this study in hand will make us much more successful to pursue funding to implement these improvements. So the question for council is, do you support advancing this IGA between the city and CDOT to this September 14 regular council meeting for consideration and approval? Truncate a timeline as due to the timing of council meetings in August and September and to meet the required CDOT timelines. And with that, I'll be available for any questions. Mayor, you're on mute.
Questions or comments?
Mayor, Councilmember Murillo.
Councilmember Murillo.
Thank you. Um, can you, um, Tom, elaborate on why, uh, 13th Avenue was selected as opposed to other similar streets?
Uh, a couple of reasons. One primary reason is because of, um, the material that was developed through the Complete Streets Consortium. So that already provided us a fair amount of, of, um, communstration for the grant that we've looked at this project and we've, uh, made considerations. Also through the recent, uh, bike share that the city had in 2016, uh, 13th Avenue was a primary hotspot for that type of activity. And so we saw a lot of bikes using 13th Avenue, but then we also recognize that, uh, there wasn't necessarily facilities to support, uh, safe and comfortable bicycle travel on 13th Avenue. Plus, it is one of the, uh, few routes in that type of, in that area of the city that goes east-west, uh, or, or that makes a almost complete can, east-west connection between Denver city limits on the east, or excuse me, on the west to the High Line Canal on the east.
Um, can I ask one follow-up question, Mayor? And you're on mute. Hi, Mayor, you're muted.
Councilmember.
I think that was the go-ahead. Sorry. Um.
Councilmember Murillo, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you for that, um, elaboration. I often, you know, when we talk about redevelopment or just plans to kind of change the current use of existing roadways or just a piece of land, I often get concerns with, um, uh, of traffic, right? And it, it, it doesn't maybe seem like, um, the biggest deal, but for folks who live in the neighborhood, they feel the congestion. Um, I guess my, I guess it's more the comment. I'm concerned that with, you know, how busy Colfax is, there are, you know, uh, vehicles are going to look for some of the side streets to, um, help alleviate or, or for them alleviate the traffic along Colfax. Do you think a study like this would improve the traffic flow? Um, or, um, can you talk a little bit more about that intersection, um, with a study like this?
Of course. Uh, one of the purposes of this study is to improve multimodal travel, uh, for residents within the corridor boundary. And as part of multimodal travel, that also includes, um, making sure that if, uh, residents, you know, want to get in the car and, and drive along, uh, 13th Avenue, uh, there's a way to do that, uh, they, they can do that. Uh, but what we also want to do is see if there's other opportunities, uh, to make it safer and more comfortable for people riding, uh, bicycles or walking along that corridor. Uh, but yes, uh, as part of the study, we would be looking at the impact on the entire network, roadway network up in that area so that we can understand if we impact, uh, 13th Avenue, how would that impact, uh, the other ways that people get around up in that area.
Further questions or comments? Uh, seeing none, the question before us is, uh, uh, whether or not to move, uh, item number, uh, um, item number 3D forward. Um, is there any opposition? I see none. Item number 3D will move forward. With clerk, please read the title of item number 4A.
Um, this is financial policies regarding the use of funds available.
Hello, this is, uh, Greg Hayes, uh, Budget Officer. Uh, we have this in front of you. There's some, the policies regarding the use of funds available. We've had this out, uh, in the world for a long time. It's basically unchanged from, uh, in, in the past decade, but we wanted to bring it back and, uh, get it in front of you, uh, and talking about the three different types of funds available that we have and the different uses, um, and the different repayment schedules. The one change that we, that we added to this from previous ones is that with the 10% policy reserves, so the council reserve, uh, it didn't previously have a repayment schedule. So we wanted to talk about a repayment schedule. Uh, the table reserve has a one fiscal year repayment schedule. We thought the policy reserve could have optimally within two fiscal years repayment schedule. And then the, the, the most useful operating reserve is just, uh, repayment as, as you can. And with that, that, that is about it. I will stop and, uh, ask, see if you have any questions.
Further questions or comments? Uh, seeing none, the question, uh, before us is to move item number 4A forward. Is there any objections? Uh, seeing none, item number 4A will move forward. Um, item number 5A will be deferred to the regular meeting, uh, since it's dual-listed, uh, ketamine, uh, prohibition, uh, resolution, uh, um, Colorado Municipal League, uh, National League of Cities. Councilmember Lawson, any report?
I have no report for that, Mayor.
Uh, legislative update, Councilmember Lawson?
I do have a couple things. Um, the House and Senate are expected to continue negotiations this week on a temporary government funding and the coronavirus relief bill. Congressional lawmakers expect to revert shutdown at the end of the month by passing a stopgap funding measure, but critical details are still being discussed, um, including the long measure, how long the long measure will last. House and Senate Democrat leadership and Senate Republican leadership and the administration remain far apart on top-line number for relief funding. Congressional Democrats have offered to come down to 2.2 trillion after the House previously passed a 3.4 trillion bill. The administration remains up to 1 trillion in aid. Both sides remain deeply divided over the amount to provide indirect state and local assistance and unemployment insurance benefits.
Very well. Uh, Denver Regional Council of Governments, uh, no report. Uh, Fitzsimmons Redevelopment Authority, um, Councilmember Burzens?
Nothing to report. We have a meeting in a week and a half.
E470 update, uh, Councilmember Bergen?
No report.
Aurora Economic Development Council, Councilmember Burzens?
No, sir, no report.
Uh, Accelerate Colorado, Councilmember Burzens?
Say, no report.
Uh, Visit Aurora, Councilmember Coombs?
Um, yes, so Visit Aurora is restarting their marketing efforts in October with the Love Your Local campaign, starting October 1st. Um, the objective of the campaign is to drive sales tax and local tax revenues while rallying support and community pride. The campaign will feature a wide range of Aurora businesses and will be promoted on social media. The campaign will end with seven days of giveaways, offering $1,000 in prizes, October 19th through 25th. And Visit Aurora is also part of the Aurora Pride Out in Aurora program, which is going on through the month of September. You can go to the Aurora Pride website to learn about participating businesses and how you can be a part of that.
Aurora Sister Cities, uh, Councilmember Marcano?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so I'm happy to report that in spite of COVID, the organization remains healthy and the committees are still actively engaged. Um, and in fact, coming up on October 24th, which is a Saturday, uh, the Central America Committee is planning a socially-distanced citywide scavenger hunt, which should be a really great time. It's going to be family-friendly. So once we have more details on that, I will be sure to put that out.
Thank you. Uh, Reimagine RTD, Councilmember Lawson?
Uh, Mayor, as you know, uh, TD has a new general manager and CEO. Her name is Deborah Johnson. She's from the Long Beach Transit, um, in, from California. Um, also, um, our meeting is going to be scheduled for the, um, policy, for the policy committee, uh, part on September 24th. They have put a pause on the reimagine, so we may not be convening again until 2021. So due, I guess, to all of, uh, the board, that's what the board has decided. So our meeting is on September 24th. Um, from what I've got gathered, we're still on course with the alternative that we have, um, with basically continuing with the, um, not, not discontinuing the R-line. So, um, that's kind of where we're at right now.
Thank you. Um, any, uh, call-ups of council policy, uh, committee items?
Councilmember Murillo.
Councilmember Murillo.
And actually, this is, um, on items from city council. Uh, we talked last time about getting regular updates for the RTD Accountability Committee. So I just wanted to reaffirm that you wanted to add that as a standing item. It sounds like it might be in lieu of reimagine RTDs since that committee is now discontinuing.
Okay, very well. Uh.
I do have an update if, if you don't mind.
Please do. And we'll make sure that you're on the next, uh, agenda.
Perfect. I, I will be able to, um, give you all timely updates. So, um, basically, you know, that there's, um, I mean, in summary, there's, RTD is carrying about 40% of pre-temp, pre-pandemic ridership, operating 60% of pre-pandemic service, service levels, but still maintaining 100% of pre-pandemic staffing and has been using CARES Act funding to maintain that. You guys might have heard that there is going to be some, um, uh, movement in, in staffing, but I guess I wanted to summarize some of the cost-saving measures that they've implemented. Um, there have been nine furlough days for sal, all salaried employees, um, for the remainder of 2020, which is about 2.9 million in savings, deferred numerous capital maintenance projects, um, they've suspended professional development funds, um, except for job-required training, um, elimination of travel funds, and a hiring freeze. So those are some of the high-level budget cuts, um, or, um, cost-saving measures that they've implemented to respond to, uh, decrease in, in the ridership, um, and, and really just to stay fiscally solvent, um, in the short term. And, and our committee is going to be working on some other short and long-term solutions, or recommendations, rather. You're muted, Mayor.
Um, Councilmember Murillo, I thank you so much for that update. And your co-chair, what is the name of the committee again?
It's, uh, the RTD Accountability Committee.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much for the update. Uh, are there any?
Mayor, can I just make a correction? The, the RTD reimagining is not discontinuing.
Okay.
So, um, I could be coming with some updates, um, in general.
Very well. Uh, so that will be, item number 5L, uh, from this point forward will be Councilmember Murillo's, uh, uh, committee. Uh, call-ups of council policy committee items? I see none. Miscellaneous items? I see none. Items removed from the agenda, if any? I see none. Policy committee minutes? Seeing none. Uh, very well. Uh, the council will reconvene at 7:30, uh, in, in a regular meeting. Thank you.